Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the special meeting of the Morganton City Council, June 23rd, 2014. Before we get into the budget for 2014-15, 2014 and 2015, I want to make some comments. Once again, there have been some Midwest, part of our country, going through national disasters that devastated three towns. No deaths fortunately, but it's another issue with the way evidently climate change and whatever is affecting our world. But here in Morganton alone, we had a microburst and it's been about, what, 10 days ago? And we had a lot of damage in Morganton. And I want to tell you, our public works, our public safety, our public utilities, electric department, everybody worked together as a team throughout the entire city. And they were working in the middle of the night, the middle of the day, and I had people that say they saw them in all hours. And I want to thank those department heads to thank their employees. It was, went above and beyond the call of duty. The county of Burke has given us three weeks of waive the landfill fees for debris like that, for at least three weeks. And we hope that'll take care of all the debris that we still have to pick up. Drexel City lent us an electric crew, and they worked with our guys and helped us put our lines back up and put our poles back up and did a great job. Valdez, Valdez sent their knuckle boom and helped us with debris pickup.
And a work crew.
And a work crew. So we've been very, very fortunate to have those different towns help us. Wouldn't have believed that we would have had the damage, but that storm set right down in the middle of Morganton. Got a letter from a citizen, Bill Steiner, wrote a wonderful letter of how it was, he saw people working with chainsaws at 2:30 a.m., our people. We were doing everything possible to get people back on. Mike Crotz in our inspection department was out immediately dealing with people that had problems in their homes. And again, I want to thank Mike because he was above and beyond the call of duty because a lot of the instances, you couldn't tell a lot of the damage, and he had to work diligently to be able to make sure that families got back in their homes very safe. I want to thank Bill Steiner for that letter. And Red, White &amp; Bluegrass Festival is Thursday, Friday, Saturday of this week. Gary's here, and Gary, I want to wish you luck, and hopefully we'll have good weather, and I believe we will. Fourth of July fireworks. Oh, by the way, you can buy tickets. You can buy tickets at the gate and probably this week, probably get ahold of somebody to get the full three days. Is that true, Gary? Okay. We have Fourth of July fireworks will be at Catawba Meadows, and it'll be entertainment down there and things for the kids to do, and you need to get there early. Fireworks will be at 9:30. And looking forward to everybody coming down there as they always do. Won't have to be interfering with the Red, White &amp; Bluegrass Festival people coming in and going out. It'll be strictly for the people wanting to be at the Fourth of July festivities. July, I'm sorry. Karen, Karen got, I don't know how many years in a row, where's Karen? Oh, behind the column. Karen received once again certificate of achievement for our excellence in financial reporting. We just got that in while you were on vacation. I want to compliment you, your staff, and all the department heads that work with you, and make sure that we have an outstanding budget presentation.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
We just found out late today, like about 15 minutes ago, Standard &amp; Poor's is a rating agency out of New York, and they rate us in our financial stability and credibility. And they have just rerated us. Karen's been working with them, and they called today. We were an A-plus rating. They have actually upgraded our rating to a double A with a stable outlook, and that's awesome for a place our size. And a real testament to how you all have managed the finances and set us up for that, and like to thank Karen for that. They haven't done many upgrades recently, so it's awfully nice that we're getting one.
That ought to make headlines, right, Tyler? And Bill Wilson is here tonight, and I have to give him a tip of the hat because this is coming up, this fall will be, commas, 20, what, Bill? Twenty?
Eight.
Twenty-eight. Yeah, you're getting old. But this is our, this season, the 2014-15 season, I have to tell you, put a stamp of approval, it's probably one of the strongest seasons I have seen. We've got people like Mamma Mia, or the play, BJ Thomas, Million Dollar Quartet, what is it?
Quartet.
Quartet. And Blood, Sweat &amp; Tears. We've got, we've got, what's the big one? No, Pam Tillis. Pam Tillis is the one I'm looking for. Pam's going to be here. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a big season, Bill. I want to congratulate you on that.
I'm about tickets.
Ticket sales, by the way, the season ticket sales, you can get an early bird special for those that want to buy ticket sales early. And let's go help Bill out because, you know...
Fourth of July 2nd is what he's trying to say.
Right. Yep. Let me think if there's anything else. Oh, yeah, the charters of freedom. Ronnie's got the charters of freedom. We're going to dedicate the Bill of Rights, the Declaration of Independence, and the Constitution downtown, nine o'clock on July 2nd, Tuesday next week. Is it next week?
Wednesday.
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 The 2nd, though. And it's at nine o'clock in the morning, so it'll be cool. We'll have a lot of chairs, a lot of people have been invited, and Vance Patterson and his family have donated a tremendous monument to this community, to the children of Burke County and the children of all around, because it's going to be a big travel and tourism project, I guarantee you. All right. Sally. Public hearing on the budget. I'm going to let you talk first about the, before I open the public hearing up.
Just a brief synopsis, since a few weeks ago, I talked an awful lot about this budget. The budget before you tonight is $71.3 million. The majority of that being the electric fund. The general fund, where the usual governmental services are housed, is $20.4 million. Some things about this budget, recommends that the tax rate remain at 53 cents per $100 of value unchanged. Recommend that the downtown special tax rate for the special tax district at 14 cents per $100 remains unchanged. Includes a recommendation that the solid waste disposal fee remain unchanged at $10 a month. Includes some capital purchases, continuation of partnerships with our community partners and some of those not in the community, the airport, the BDI group, with the Burke County Narcotics Task Force, with the Western Piedmont Cog, and several other organizations that we partner with throughout the year. Included in the budget is also a recommended water rate increase, and the recommended water rate increase would go into effect July the 1st, and that is 10 cents in the volume charge. So that would be 10 cent increase per 1,000 gallons of water used. For a typical household, 5,000 gallons a month inside the city, that's a 50 cent a month increase, $6 a year. That would be double for the outside customers, the ones outside of the city. For comparison's sake, you may be interested in knowing that the total water fee at the rate increase would be $14.40 for 5,000 gallons of water. In Valdez, that costs you $30, I mean, $30 a month, and in Burke County, that costs you $40 a month for the same 5,000 gallons of water. The electric fund has a recommended increase included in that that would also be effective July the 1st of 2.3%. 2.1% of that is a wholesale rate increase coming to us from Duke Energy, and .2 tenths of a percent is the increase to fund the distribution system, our local expenses. That equates to, for a typical electric household, $2.19 a month is what that recommended increase would equate to. No recommended increase in the wastewater fees, those would remain unchanged. And in Compass Cable, a recommended increase of $4 for basic cable, that would go into effect January 1 of 2015. An increase of $1.50 a month for our bare bones basic service, taking that from $23.95 to $25.45, and that would also go into effect January 1, 2015. And then effective August 1st, our new speeds in our internet service will be offered to all of our customers. The lowest speed that we will be offering will be 10.2, that's 10 megabits per second, and that is at $39.95 a month. We are recommending that we would no longer offer our light service, and everyone would be upgraded to the 10.2 speed. Again, that's $39.95 a month, and there's business fees that go along with that for businesses, and there's a graduated schedule for getting higher speeds, the rates go up. Everything else is pretty much status quo. We'll tell you that in the budget before you, there are 282.25 positions funded. There are 37.25 allocated positions that you have allocated over the years that are not filled and remain frozen and unfunded in this budget. This budget also includes a 2% cost of living adjustment for all employees that would go into effect July the 12th, which is the beginning of the first full payroll in the new fiscal year. The total cost to that citywide is $219,859. There are two previously frozen positions that are funded in here, one in the public safety department to deal with the transition to the new consolidated 911 center, and then also in recreation, that would be a recreation center supervisor at the Mountain View Center. And...
That's it.
That's a summary.
Our budget is on our website. True, Sally?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody wanting to see it tonight when they get home, you're welcome to do that. Public hearing, I'm going to open in just a second, but we have some new ground rules on this kind of public hearing. I'm going to let Louie explain to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They're not new in one sense. I believe they were adopted last October or November, at the same time, in November, we adopted the public comment guidelines. But just reminding everyone, if you wish to speak at any of the public hearings, and we have several of them tonight, you'll be recognized by the mayor as to come forward to the lectern here and identify yourself by name and street address. If, a few other things. The most important thing, though, is that on a public hearing, your comments must be limited to the topic, the subject of the public hearing. The one that the mayor is about to call to order, of course, is on the budget, the proposed budget, questions arising concerning our revenue and expenditures, and your comments will be limited to that, and that will be enforced. Obviously, the mayor may stop any speaker who attempts to discuss any matter that's outside that topic. Also, the council is not required to respond to any of your comments, but questions may be asked back and forth between council members and a speaker. I think those are the main things.
I'm opening up the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak for or against our budget, welcome to come to the podium and tell us your name and where you reside. Anyone wishing to speak for or against our budget? Now's the time. Close the public hearing on the, on our budget, 2014-2015, and ask the council what their
Mayor, I move to approve the budget with one following change that was submitted to us, and that request would be to, to take the money that's in the budget, allocated for raises, the 2% raise, and have that equally divided among all full-time city employees, excluding the mayor and city council. That's my motion.
We need a second on that. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, second, discussion.
Yes. I, I feel that we need to be consistent with our salary range. When higher-paid employees get a 2% raise, it does expand the salary range between different stations. Second thing is, I feel the lower-paid employees have the same expenses as the higher-paid employees, and I don't think they should get less money just because of their station in life. That's how I feel. And I feel we should take that, that pot of money we've got in our budget for salaries, and split it equally among all full-time employees, excluding the mayor and city council.
Ronnie, there's not a lot of difference in the amount of money, I believe, from the check that you're talking about giving them and the 2% quota.
Well, then, people wouldn't mind voting for the amendment, then, if there's not that much difference.
The other thing is, is that, you know, when we had furloughs, two years' worth of furloughs, everybody took the furlough, bottom, from the bottom to the top. And the bigger salaries took a bigger hit. How do you feel about that?
I think everybody should get the same amount of money. The lower-paid people took a hit, and they're in lower-income bracket. So their hit probably hurt worse than the higher hit, because those folks have more pay coming in each month.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Ted.
I also don't agree with the percentage raise. Reason being, it ate out of the previous 10 years, employees have received a percentage raise. This only makes the gap between the higher-paid and the lower-paid employees grow larger. If the same amount of money it takes to give 2% raise were divided equal among all 287 employees, 170 lower-paid employees would receive more money. This would be a one-time bonus, and added to the salary, and added to their retirement. Many of these lower-paid employees were the ones who repaired our broken water lines when it was five degrees, and got our power restored during the recent storm. And like you said, Mr. Mayor, thank you, but a thank you don't buy the bread, milk, and the gas. It takes money to do that. We have an opportunity, gentlemen, to help the lower little man out, and I hope we take
I think that we have to recognize that we have a personnel department that was not that recommended this cost of living increase across the board. We have a system that puts a dollar amount on every position that's in the, that's employed at this time, and a lot of work, a lot of hard work went into putting a dollar amount on each position. And when these employees became an employee, they agreed to come to work for their pay, and there is an implied contract there. And nobody forced anyone to come in at a lower position. And I've been in the business world for over 50 years, and I've never seen an across-the-board same amount in any company I've ever been with. And I think that this would, sure, it would help lower-paid people, but what about the attitude of those other people that have been out helping with the, taking the frozen pipes, the, those managers that had to do that, and those managers that work more than 40 hours a week without any additional pay? It's, I think this, this is, in some ways, a slap in the face to some managers that are very essential to the running of this city.
Let me say, Ronnie, we got, all of us got a copy of the 10-year history of what we've done in the city of Morganton with percentages of, our cost of living percentages. In 10 years, our employees, due to the two-year furloughs that everybody took, whether it be a department head, manager, or Public Works, Electric, our employees have only received 5.5% cost of living in 10 years. That's a tough thing to digest for our employees, all our employees. You've got a list also. Out of a couple of hundred towns in North Carolina, there's only one town that did what you're asking to do and what the second has been. And I understand, look, I sympathize with what you're saying and what the feeling that you and Sidney have, but most towns, and 99% of the towns probably in North Carolina and counties are given a cost of living, whether it be 1.5%, 2%, 2.5% or 3%. I think three's been the max, 1.5% been the lowest. Some are doing merits. You know, I challenged you on Monday, and I didn't hear anything back from you. Let's do a, let's do a pay plan, like we did back in 2004, I believe it was, or so. We spent about $35,000, did a pay plan of every job in the city, and, and we, we went into that pay plan, we spent a couple of hundred thousand every year for two years, and then all of a sudden, the country fell apart economically. But I think we need to get back into that. I asked you to do that on Monday, and I think it'd be something we need to talk about. We'll talk about that in a minute.
Right. I didn't realize it was a challenge on Monday for me to do that.
Well, I think it's something that we need to do for our employees.
I think we need to do that. Go ahead.
You know, our, our pay for different departments and different employees probably don't rank up to what it should be. Other towns are doing pay plans. We need to get heavily involved in doing that, and it was a lengthy procedure. I just, I just totally disagree, and I think what I've got to do, and I'm going to make a substitute motion.
Yeah.
You want to talk? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. I guess I'm still on the council, huh?
Yep, you are. You are. You are.
What I would like to interject into this is it'd be my objective to, first of all, do the right thing and to do what's fair. And I think everybody up here would probably agree that that's what we all want to do. Taking in consideration that we've already talked about the fact that several years ago, when the budget situation was difficult, we asked our employees to take furloughs. And I didn't receive any comments from, from any employee about this. I think everybody understood that we needed to balance our budget, and we had to do what we had to do. And so be it. Now that we're in a position to where we're able to give a salary increase, and the furloughs, when you get right down to the nitty-gritty and the fact of it, is amounted to a percentage decrease in everybody's salary. Admitted that those folks that, that make more of a salary are going to take a bigger cut. That's just common sense, that's just the way it worked out. Now we're able, and if that was fair, and now that we're able to give a salary increase, I think that it would be just as fair to interject or to have a, a percentage increase for giving a salary increase. Now, I don't, I'm not in favor of using the Robin Hood approach to salary increases, and that's kind of what we're talking about here. If it was fair, taking a percentage decrease, then why would it not be fair to take a percentage in the increase? And I don't think that we need to slam one particular group in salaries in order to benefit another particular group in salaries. And so therefore, I'll be voting to do the right thing and to do the fair thing, and that is for the percentage increase.
I'm sorry, Forrest, I agree with you. I didn't think about you wanting to make comments. Comment is still open.
Mayor, I'd like to address some of those issues that were raised. Some of the rationales have been, since everybody's doing it, we should do it. And I, you and I have talked about this, I don't care what they're doing in Fayetteville, don't care what they're doing in Hickory, all I care about is Morganton. Some people say we need to keep up with the cost of living. I don't think the city of Morgantown can afford to keep up with the cost of living. If you're trying to, because the cost of living has gone up, I just don't think financially we can keep up with that. And Councilman John said that some, at least implied that some of the lower-paid employees accepted their station in life, and with an implied contract, that was the department heads, too. They, when they came on, they accepted that. So I don't think it involves any contract, I think it's just treating people fairly, giving everybody the same amount of money.
Anyone else?
To address what Forrest had to say about slamming one aspect, I don't think you're... We're not trying to slam, we're trying to bring everybody up to the same. So you're not slamming either side, you're just bringing them all up to the same. And when it comes to the, as you mentioned, Mel, the, going back to a different style on the raises, I'd rather, I tend to wonder to have the percentage raises I had the buddy plan raise, where you, it's a merit system. I'm just, I'm just totally against that. I've seen too much of it.
John?
If you don't have a merit system, and you call it the buddy system?
That's exactly what it is, a buddy system.
I think there, again, you're being unfair to those folks that have to do the appraisal of their employees. Shouldn't that be something that we try to do every year? To, to take a look at our people and see who are doing the good jobs and who are just hanging in there? That's not the buddy system. And I think the managers that have been hired here are above the buddy system. And it's, you and Ronnie think one thing is fair, and I think there are three others that think there's another thing fair. We all think it's fair. Now, and I don't think that we're doing anything because everybody else is doing it, Ronnie. That's, that's not, that never was in any of the finance committee meetings that I attended. It's, it's what we can, it's what we can afford, and we can afford the 2% raise. Now, if you give this $800 or whatever the amount figures out to be across the board, some issues that may come up. The, it doesn't affect the, the rates of over 200 part-timers. And part-time employees are very important to this city. We have quite a number at different seasons of the year for different reasons, but if there's a part-time employee that is very much needed during the summer, they're not going to get a thing. Under the 2% cost of living increase, their rate will increase by 2%. Now, if we give across the board 800 bucks, are we going to give 800 bucks to the guy that's just been employed a couple months?
That's what they're saying, because the vacant positions who haven't been hired yet are going to get the 2%. That's the way I understand it, there's five vacant positions, and they've all been included in the 2% raise, so...
Their rate will be increased.
That's correct.
And they will come on board.
Right.
And which will make them equal to all of their people that have that particular job and that rate. So I think it's fair.
Okay. Well, let me make this comment. I'm not at all opposed to the lower-paid employees getting a larger salary increase. However, I don't think it, this is the way to do it, too, by just dividing up the whole lot of money that's been allocated for... by just dividing up the whole lot of money that's been allocated for salary increases and divide it among all the employees. It, that just doesn't make any sense to me. It, it just, it's not an ethical thing to do. I, I just don't, I just don't see that that's the way to do it. If, you know, if this is the best we can do, then we, probably none of us need to be sitting up here.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I'm gonna withdraw. I close the public hearing, right?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
And you had started to make a substitute motion.
I'm gonna withdraw my, I'm not gonna do, out of courtesy to you, Ronnie, I'm not gonna do a substitute motion.
It hadn't been seconded anyway.
Yeah, okay. Let's vote on yours straight up and down. You wanna read, do you have his motion?
To approve.
To approve the budget.
To approve the budget with the change being that the two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars would be divided evenly among all full-time employees.
Excluding the mayor and city council. I never know how, well, I don't know how we're counting, so. Mel's doing full-time work to get part-time pay, I know that.
Appreciate you speaking for me.
I understand.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
You need a second?
We had a.
Well, I think Sidney seconded that.
All right, raise your hand. Okay, two. All against, raise your hand. Three.
Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion that the two percent be given.
Wait a minute, there's no motion on the floor right now. It wouldn't be a substitute motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the two percent be given, that, that the budget be approved with the following amendment. Two percent be given to all full-time employees with a minimum increase of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, excluding the city manager, a city council and a mayor. So this would be, everybody would get at least, well, that's my motion, I'll do the discussion later.
Second.
Can you say that again?
The budget will be approved with the following amendment. Two percent will be given to all full-time employees with a minimum increase of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, excluding city council and mayor.
Now here's second.
Yes, sir, you did.
The same discussion, I don't need to add. I'm just trying to make sure those lower paid employees get at least seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And everybody else that would get more than seven-fifty would get the two percent raise.
Sally, you have your calculator.
I do not.
You might have a calculator.
Do you, does the movement know what's the cost?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how to give you that number. I mean, obviously, we can come up with that number, but it's gonna take longer than us sitting here right now and spouting out a number.
Seven, seven-fifty divided by two-thousand-and-eighty. That's forty hours a week, fifty-two.
You want to divide it by the hours in a year, right? Point three-six.
Thirty-six cents an hour. Now... That would be.
Right, that's what you wanted me to do, seven-hundred-and-fifty divided by two-thousand-and-eighty hours.
How many other people would that affect?
Sidney, you said a hundred and?
Seventy.
I don't think so.
Yeah, we're.
Ronnie? I, I withdraw my amendment.
No, that's the number, that's the dollar amount in salary, okay? Because again, what Karen is saying is, let's say, for example's sake, there's fifty employees that are gonna get seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars instead of a two percent figure, okay? Then those fifty employees would get seven-fifty added, if I'm understanding this correctly, added to their base pay.
Correct.
And then we would pay FICA on that, there would be retirement paid on that, there would be 401K, if it's a public safety person, life insurance if it's a, so those are all percentage based, right? So there would be a total that we could calculate and a total that we could calculate that would affect each fund. And, no, I don't think so, although we're adopting our budget, okay, you adopt the budget. We, we could have run these numbers and kind of known. You, you adopt your budget ordinance, okay? In the general fund, our legal authority is by function. If you look at your budget ordinance, that was advertised in the newspaper and that is presented, that is the legal authority with which we have to adopt a budget, okay? So in the general fund is twenty-million-four-thirty-six-seven-forty-six. And it is spelled out by function, you see the functions within there. And that's the legal spending authority that we will have for next year without your changing in each of those functions. For the utility funds, you see in total, right? And that's the legal spending authority. So if we want to come back and either amend our spending authority, okay? Which means increase it by whatever this dollar amount increases in each area, we can come back with that number. If you want to amend this spending level and then come back and cut out some other expenditure within this spending level that makes up for that.
We're not gonna do this tonight. We're gonna pass our budget like we just did. If you withdraw, we'll work. I know where you're coming from, Ronnie, and I respect where you and Sidney are coming from. Gotta respect where the three of us are coming from.
I understand.
We need to get on with life and the pay plan is where I think the, we can help all employees and.
But that won't take effect till next year at least.
I understand that, but time wasn't, Rome wasn't built in a day, you know?
Can I, may I say something?
You can say something.
If you adopt this ordinance and then if you all agree to come back, we can certainly calculate and give you dollars. And if you want to amend the budget and do that, you can certainly do that in the next fiscal year. And you can amend that for salaries, whatever reason that you feel like is a valid reason to amend the budget. You can amend the budget.
Does that sound good to you? Ronnie?
Yes, I withdraw my.
It's not as simple as seven-fifty times two-hundred or whatever the number is.
Does Sidney have to read?
Does that?
Okay. I withdraw my second.
All right, thank you.
That's clear for the record, the motions, that motion's been withdrawn, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So we could come back with the numbers, right? And you can amend the two-thousand-and-fourteen-fifteen budget to do that if you so choose.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
I move we accept the budget as presented by.
Well, we, we've already.
No.
No.
We have a motion.
I move we accept the budget as presented.
As presented, have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay.
Who seconded that?
Forrest.
Forrest. Okay, schedule consideration of schedule of fees and charges, Sally.
Okay, along with your budget, you have the schedule of fees and charges. The only amendments and changes to that this year would be the water rate increase that you just approved in the budget, the electric rate increase and the two cable rate increases.
I make a motion to adopt the schedule of fees and changes, charges for fiscal year two-thousand-and-fourteen-fifteen.
I second it. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, year-end budget amendment, Sally.
It's that time of year that we do technical amendments to transfer and move around dollars and, and get the budget in order for the end of this fiscal year. If it's acceptable to you guys, I'd like to take these by fund because that's how we adopted budgets originally.
We will need a motion and a second on each one of the budgets.
Correct, and this is for fiscal year thirteen-fourteen, okay? The current year that we're in.
I move to approve the general fund budget amendment for three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-twenty-nine dollars.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion to approve the water fund budget amendment for ninety-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars.
I do.
Okay, motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the wastewater fund budget amendment for four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-five dollars.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to approve the cable fund budget amendment of eighty-seven-thousand-three-hundred.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, guys.
We have another budget amendment.
Waste water, yeah.
With the state revolving loan money and the big wastewater treatment plant project, we are required to maintain a capital projects budget for that, which is really housed within our wastewater budget. So we are asking to, to clean that up. We have worked with Leah Martin at the COG and, and gotten that straightened out. It is a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars is, is the amount of the budget. What we are doing is transferring the money out of the contingency line item, putting it into the construction because it's now been spent with change orders in the project. And that's what the contingency was for. The other thing that we're doing is recognizing the seventy-thousand dollars that you guys approved for us to borrow for the biosolids removal. And then a hundred thousand dollars from the operations of the wastewater fund to go to further improvements out there that complement the project.
See the motion, guys?
I move to approve the budget amendment to move one-hundred thousand between the wastewater fund and the wastewater capital projects fund.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing, I'm gonna open it up. Public hearing to consider an uncontiguous annexation, I said it right, didn't I? An uncontiguous annexation petition submitted by Mole Incorporated for approximately one-point-one acres located at fifteen-oh-four Bethel Road. Sally?
This is a petition for a voluntary annexation and it is for a portion of the property that is located at fifteen-oh-four Bethel Road. The property is at the southwest corner of exit one-oh-six and I-40. And you're looking at, it's approximately point-eight miles from the existing corporate limits and currently has access to city sewer service, gets water service from Triple Community, which is now Valdez. And Public Safety has looked at this and determined that the property is within the necessary emergency response and patrol limits established for their response from their department. Public hearing was advertised in the News Herald on Wednesday, June eleventh.
Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come up to the podium and state your name and where you reside.
I'm Ed Witt, I reside at twenty-five-oh-five South Sterling Street, City Limit Discount Beverage. I'm in posse of this because I run a business there. And as I understand it, this is so the store can have beer and wine sales. I'm opposed to it.
Okay, any, anything else you'd like to say? Appreciate it very much, thank you. You got his name and, okay. Anyone else? Public hearing's closed. Counsel?
I move we adopt an ordinance annexing one-point-one-seven uncontiguous acres located at fifteen-oh-four Bethel Road into the corporate limits of Morganton effective June thirtieth, twenty thousand, two thousand and fourteen.
Now here's second. I'll second. Discussion?
Can Valdez supply enough water for this property?
Yeah, they already do.
I mean.
It's triple. The old triple system, which is now Valdez.
I'd like to ask Leah a question on this if.
State your name, where you reside.
City Hall most days.
Leah, by looking at the map of this, it, it appears to me that, am I correcting my assumption that this is a larger tract than what's being asked for, for annexation? Is, is, is that a fact? It is, it's part of a larger tract there, isn't it?
It's part of additional land holdings that Mole Incorporated owns at the interchange section in that quadrant. There's some vacant property and, and on both sides of the convenience store as it sits right now. They have not requested the entire intersection to be annexed, just the existing convenience store property.
Okay, now I wonder why it would be that they, do you have any idea why they would not want that whole quadrant in the annexation?
They have not indicated why they would not want the entire quadrant. We have been talking to Mr. Mole about potential development around that interchange. It's an important interchange for the city and for Burke County to develop. It's been zoned commercial for quite, quite a few years, but Sewer's only been in the area probably eight to ten years when it was brought up to the convenience store and the old hotel site. So there's certainly more development potential there. It'd be my hope that, that would be annexed also in the future by a voluntary annexation.
If it comes into the city, what can the city redeem out of this annexation?
Well, it, it puts the city in a position to annex additional properties and to build other tax base, participate perhaps in incentives and other things to develop the interchange. It's, the existing store is a small amount. I think it's currently valued at two-hundred-and-seventy-seven, right at two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars. So we'd like to see that obviously increase over time.
I, I know that this may not have anything to do greatly with the annexation. But I, I went out today and kind of rode around that piece of property. That building is not in too good a state of repair. It would appear to me it hadn't been anything done to it in the last fifteen years probably. The backside of the building's in very poor state of repair. It's got a lot of moles and that sort of thing on the, on the back of the building. I, I wonder if the landowner has any plans to kind of upgrade the building to give it a little better appearance? And we, we've got plenty of poor structures in the city that we're, we're spending money on to try to get things done to them, many of which during two or three, well, three or maybe more than that this past year that we've had torn down. I'm a little bit concerned about the state of the property. The building itself and the, the parking lot sits in poor state of repair. Need some repair on it too. Do you know whether the builder or the landowner has any plans to do a little refurbishing on the property?
He's not shared with me if he's gonna do any upgrades. Mr. Patel, I believe, he's the operator of the convenience store. The Mole folks own the property and they lease it to Mr. Patel. I did speak with him today and, and of course, he's very interested in coming into the city. He did not share with me any plans for renovations or expansions or improvements. Now, one of the things that potentially would change, if there are nuisance or problems there related to the building code, the area would be inside the city limits. And so all code enforcement activities that we typically do not do in the ETJ that are by statute provided to folks within the city, you know, we could enforce those new rules and regulations on the site if it, if it, if there's issues in, in relation to that. We do have it in our building inspection program currently. So, I mean, we, if they were to do a renovation or anything, even outside of the city, we, we currently manage it for building code, but we don't manage it for code enforcement. but we don't manage it for code enforcement or, uh, uh, nuisance violations. We can't do that out to the ETJ. So there may be some things there we can certainly take a look at if there's nuisance, uh, issues. Pavement conditions or, you know, uh, aesthetic conditions are sometimes difficult to do on a building, but if it's overgrown or if it's something that's, uh, creating a neighborhood nuisance, then we could certainly take a look at those. If it becomes a city, any other property.
Thank you, Lee. Any other discussion, any questions, Lee, anybody else? Okay. Yes, sir.
I don't think I hear you talk about us bringing money in, money in. I've been in my location for twenty-three years. Why do I pay Duke Power my power bill and not the city? We got power bills of twelve, fourteen hundred dollars a month. There's your some money.
Wish it were as easy as you say it. It's not that easy, unfortunately.
Electric territory is determined by statute.
Electric is a special situation, sir, and if you were served by Duke Power before, neither you nor anyone else had the choice to change it. We can't, regrettably, we can't control that.
I understand. We'd love to have it. Okay, we have any other discussion? All, motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is, um, consideration of a non-contiguous annexation petition submitted, I'm sorry.
No, it's contiguous.
I just like the word now.
Now that he knows how to say it.
Public hearing to consider a contiguous annexation, not non-contiguous, uh, annexation petition submitted by Crescent Communities LLC for approximately 2.81 acres located at one thousand and one North Green Street. I'm gonna open the public hearing up. Anyone's wishing to speak for, or Sally, go ahead.
This is again another voluntary annexation petition is submitted by Crescent Communities LLC, and again is for the property on North Green Street. Currently, uh, the property owned out there, and Crescent owns quite a bit of property out there. This is a piece of property which part of it is in the city limits and part of it is not. And so they are looking and asking to annex, uh, 2.75 plus acres, which is the property located between the Oechy Restaurant and the Dollar General out there, so that all of that piece of property would be located within the city. Current value of that's approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They are looking to develop that, and the talk has been the development of a grocery store. All city services are available there, and the public hearing was advertised in the News Herald on Wednesday, June eleventh.
Let me mention, uh, as a side issue, this is Crescent Communities, I believe that's what they call themselves, yeah, are coming to us, no one else. The land has not been sold, uh, just so you'll know that. As recently as twelve o'clock today, it has not been sold. And Crescent wants that piece of little sliver of land, uh, annexed into the city. It's NRETJ, rightly. It's NRETJ. Okay. Public hearing is open.
Yes.
Those wishing to speak for or against, come to the podium, state your name and where you reside.
My name's Ron O'Cook, I live at thirty-one forty-five Luke Smith Avenue, Morganton. I'd just like to say, now, you said the land hasn't been sold, uh, but they've already, uh, there's already been published, it's already been in the paper, uh, and, and quite a few other sources that the purchaser of this is gonna be Walmart, and they're gonna open up an independent or standalone grocery store, okay? And it's more than just a discussion, the plans, the architectural drawings, everything's already been done. They're just waiting on this to complete the sale. The purpose of annexation should be, one of the, the main purposes of it is to do something that's gonna benefit the city of Morganton and our community. I would like to make the argument that it will not benefit, but it would actually be a detriment to the, uh, to the city for this Walmart store, grocery store to open. One thing, we've got, we've only got three chain stores in, in Morganton already. Windixie closed down, Harris Teeter recently closed down. We've got Bylos, Food Line, and Ingles, as far as I know. One thing that's been shown in study after study is when Walmart comes in and opens up grocery stores, other grocery stores close down, okay? That would leave us with, if, you know, if we start losing more grocery stores out of the three that we've already got now, then we're gonna have, you know, a couple Walmart groceries, the Super Walmart grocery, but, you know, what about Ingles and Food Line and Bylos? Ingles is a North Carolina-based community. They buy produce from North Carolina farmers, from area farmers. They buy meats from North Carolina outlets. Walmart doesn't do any of that, no local produce, um, no local meats. The, uh, there's a study that was done by Loyola, Loyola University that shows that for every job Walmart, for every, uh, two jobs that Walmart creates in the community, that three jobs are lost. And it's even worse than that because the jobs that they, uh, that are, that we're losing usually pay twenty-five percent more than the same jobs at Walmart, the, the two jobs that are being created for the loss of three jobs that paid twenty-five percent more, okay? Another thing is, this is gonna benefit Walmart, but is it gonna benefit the city of Morganton? By annexing, one of the things that's gonna happen is that water rates would go down for that piece of property, is that correct?
The water rates would be inside the city rates.
Inside city rates, which is half of what outside the city rates, if I'm, if I'm correct. So we'd be losing, you know, any potential, uh, uh, revenue from that. The, um, the main thing that, uh, and, and one more thing that we're looking at, too, is, is Walmart jobs cost us money, not just as a city, but as a community, as a state and a nation. It's been estimated that Walmart, um, let's see, let me get my glasses on here, excuse me for just a second. Let's see. There's one thing that, that I would ask, even if you don't, uh, choose at this time not to annex, but one thing a lot of communities are doing before they annex is they're doing an economic impact review. And they're requiring the people that are asking for the annexation to do that economic impact review by an independent company. One that was done, a typical one that was done for Walmart coming in, uh, in the, in the northeast and, and Manhattan, or, excuse me, in Massachusetts actually, showed that there would not be any additional income, added to the economy, but they would siphon off ten to twenty percent of the sales of dozens of other stores in the area. So what we end up is people aren't gonna, people are only gonna buy so many groceries, okay? And we're not gonna sell any more groceries, we're not gonna have any more taxes coming in from that. We're, we're, we're gonna lose, um, uh, the possibility of being able to charge double the rate of, um, on our utilities that are gonna be provided for them, so it's a benefit for them. But is it really a benefit to the city of Morganton to lose another grocery store? To lose three jobs for every two jobs that they create and lose those jobs, those higher paying jobs, twenty-five percent higher on average, for a job that's gonna put somebody else on food stamps, somebody else on welfare? To me, it just doesn't make sense to, uh, to, um, do something that's gonna hurt the city economically. And it may sound good, you know, and I'm sure that their argument would be, oh, we're creating jobs, but they're not really, and studies show it. They're actually killing higher paying jobs and killing competition. And we all know that monopolies lead to bad things, uh, and I think that, uh, that it would be kind of a slap in the face to some of the other grocery stores and, and, uh, maybe not a slap in the face, but it would, it would hurt some of these other stores. Another thing that, that I worry about, too, and a lot of people worry about is the choice for organics. I have stage four cancer. Being able to find organic food is something that's very important to me. It's not just a fad, it's something I take very seriously. Ingles has a wonderful source of organic, and most of it locally sourced, uh, organic produce. Walmart doesn't offer that. The organics that they do offer, most of them are coming from overseas, where the organic, uh, requirements are not as less, are not as stringent, and the oversight into the process, the way these things are grown, and, um, uh, is less. So I, I think it would, uh, it would take another option away from us there, and it's a possibility it could hurt our local farmer's market. Another thing, too, is we look at what happens to the money that they get after they make it. Like I said, Ingles Grocery Store, which we've got two locations, one of them's struggling right now. It's in the great big empty building where the old Walmart used to be, which is a I-sold that I pass every time I come into town. The, um, the, um, Ingles Store, um, is gonna be spending money locally, and that money stays locally. It's a North Carolina-owned business, and they support our local farmers. The money that's made in Walmart goes to Arkansas, to some people who have so many billions of dollars they don't need anymore. It would be my contention that, that it would be in the best interest of the city of Morganton to try to do things that are gonna help local businesses, that it's gonna try to keep local high paying jobs and not fall for the, the, we're creating jobs, when they're not really. That's pretty much all I got to say about it.
Thank you, you've done some good homework.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Public hearing's still open. Still open. Close the public hearing. Let me mention one important thing I think you need to understand, is that Crescent Communities, they wanna put a grocery store there, can put a grocery store there, whoever it might be. It's already zoned. One hundred percent zoned for it right now. And there is, you know, there was damage done by headlines and things like that that, uh, didn't need to happen because they have not bought that piece of property. Crescent will be here next month, the month after. They want to have their, uh, sliver of, of that piece of property brought into the city limits. Okay, we've got, we have closed the public hearing. What are your wishes, counsel?
I move to adopt an ordinance annexing 2.81 contiguous acres located at one oh one North Green Street into the corporate limits of Morganton effective June thirtieth, twenty fourteen.
Second. Have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, I heard your comments, and what I hear you saying is that this is not a vote against Walmart or against anybody else, this is just a vote to bring property into the city as we do annexations throughout the year.
They're gonna develop that property, uh, whether we like it or not, you know, and, uh, it almost happened seven, eight years ago, uh, and it didn't, of course, and they're just moving closer to wanting that property annexed into the city. It is NRETJ, we do have jurisdiction over it, it's just they want it annexed into the city.
And they could tomorrow, even if this, this motion passes, doesn't pass, could establish any grocery store there or any other business with that zoning.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, last item. Consideration of entering into a billing service agreement with South Data, Sally.
In the budget that you just passed, uh, there were some funds budgeted in order to contract with a company known as South Data. One of the things that city staff has been pursuing, and I know we have several council members interested in that, is a way in which we could begin e-billing our customers, so we wouldn't have to print bills and, and mail bills. Not, well, to the customers who choose that, we would still do that for those who don't. We have found a company that we believe is capable of doing that, and I know that in our News Herald article, one thing that we need to clear up, Tyler, if we can, um, this is not to offer people the ability to pay bills online, they have had that for quite some time. As a matter of fact, a year ago, you moved to the Point and Pay group, and I can report to you tonight that one year ago, we did two thousand four hundred and eighty-one online payments in a year. After moving to Point and Pay, which allows our customers to pay their bills online if they choose with no fee, we have done eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four online payments this past year since we moved. So I think that shows us that there's an interest in people doing business that way. In order to do that, we need to partner with someone because we are not large enough to do that. South Data, we believe, can deliver those services. Councilman Simmons and Fleming went with Karen and did a visit and heard their pitch. We would ask that you approve this contract with them so we can get started. What will happen is all of our softwares will be integrated, and our payment portal will finally be able to work with all of their stuff. We will be able in the next six months, we believe, to offer online e-billing to our customers with this. They'll do other things, they'll do mailing, they'll, they'll do design and layout services for billing, that sort of thing. So we think it's a good opportunity, and we don't wanna wait to do this in August. We'd like to go ahead and approve it, it's a three-year contract, would start July first.
So Sally, would they do the whole package, they would do the, the hard copy as well as the email?
Yes, they would.
I move to approve and enter in a billing service agreement with South Data Incorporated.
Second. Motion second. Discussion.
Yes, Mayor, our city manager, please, who, who sends out our bills now, our staff?
We do.
Okay. Will we lose any jobs by having them send out the bills?
We will not. There are plenty of things that we can do with thirty-seven point two-five frozen positions, and people doing much more than one box on the organizational chart, we will not.
Do they bill for other cities, or any idea how many other cities do they bill for?
Many other cities, and they do, how many counties in the state? Nine?
More than ninety of the counties.
Yeah, more than ninety counties.
Other electric cities you found, they are the, the largest company in North Carolina that does do this for municipalities.
So we are using a North Carolina company, at least keeping that money in the state?
We are.
In Mount Airy.
Mount Airy.
Okay.
Okay, we'll have a motion, you have a second.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on this. This is kinda what I determined to be the second phase of this, uh, general project. We went, went through what I considered to be the first phase when, uh, when we did our other proposal to, uh, assist with the, uh, payments online, and, uh, we originally did that because, uh, looking at it, I thought it was a little bit ridiculous to charge somebody six dollars and ninety-five cents to pay your bill online, and we were able to, uh, get a program that, we got that reduced considerably, got it down to about a, a tenth of that amount. And, uh, this is kinda the second phase, I, I would say, that we're now gonna be able to expand the program and have somebody that's going to, uh, uh, mail out the bills and, in the long run- And in the long run, this little project's gonna save the city a considerable amount of money.
We hope so. We hope enough people ultimately use it that we'll be able to recognize some savings in the postage and the paper stock, the things that you won't have to have. That's the goal.
Enough said on that.
What about Compass? Will Compass be part of this?
Yes. And taxes, tax bills.
Thank you for your persistence.
That's the plan.
Good.
Horace, appreciate your persistence. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank the city council for their input tonight. It's been a very good meeting. We appreciate all the department heads and a lot of public people coming out tonight. Thank you very much. It means a lot. Meeting's adjourned.